Good morning. The October 9, 2017 regularly scheduled Commissioners Court's called to order. We'll start with the invocation followed by the pledge. Mitzi, please.
Lord, we want to thank you this morning for all of your many blessings you give us every day. I want to ask you this morning for your mercy and for your healing for any of our county family and our extended families that may be ill. Lord, please be with our first responders and our military and bring all our folks home every night and back from overseas just as quick as you can get them here. Lord, with their families and folks out there hurting and their hearts are still hurting, we pray that you heal their hearts and heal their bodies and heal our country. We ask these things in all your blessings, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, our pledge is to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
As always, we'd ask you to turn off your cell phones, pagers, except for emergency personnel and law enforcement. So Jenny had an emergency call, so she's not going to be here. I don't know who's doing this. You are? Okay. Acknowledge the impact of the year honorary. Lex from purchasing. My gosh, yeah. Good morning. How Lex?
Christie's going to come up and talk to him, talk about him a little bit, brag on him a little bit, but he was nominated more than seven times throughout the year for the monthly honors.
Wow. You got your high school picture out there on the TV.
I think most of you have read the things that we had to say about Lex. Mine was that he is worth his weight in gold. And Abby that also worked with us said he goes out of his way to help anyone he can. He is a person of his word, and when dealing with the public, he is professional and respectful. And those are all Lex. And we wouldn't be where we are without him, and I can't say enough about him. Appreciate him more than he knows.
Wow. Your turn.
I'm still, it's very humbling to me, and it's really quite an honor. And I look back and, you know, we just, we do what we're supposed to do. And I have to share this with my department.
They laugh.
And I'll make this very clear. I have to tell you, Christie has been an incredible mentor. She is really a tremendous leader. She's a terrific supervisor, and I just owe so much to her in making the transition from a publicly traded company and coming into the state and local government. So I've learned tremendous amount from Christie.
Good.
And Kay has made me learn to appreciate that blue is my favorite shade of gray. But Kay has really made an impact in our department and has worked very closely with the vendors. And she's really brought it up to an excellent level, and so I have to let her know that. And without them, I mean, we are a team, and when the ball drops, someone picks it up. I know it sounds cliché-ish, but that's what we do in our department. And many people will ask me, when I'm out there, I'm always thinking about, am I representing the county well? Even when I'm not working, people know where I work. And I pray that I do bring honor to this family. And they will ask me, what do you do? And I'll ask them, do you live and work and play in Midland County? And they said, yes. And I said, I work for you, but let me tell you what I do. And then I go into detail. But with that said, in our department, all the other departments are our primary customers, and we work so hard and diligent to make sure that we do our part so that everybody else can do their excellent job in those respective positions that they have. We all have administrative responsibilities, but we try to alleviate some of those stresses so that they can concentrate on their very important jobs. So with that said, I have to end this. I write all the time, I know, I write, but I have to tell you that the tree with the hands are just, it's an incredible message. And I wrote a long time ago about thanking people who allowed me the opportunity to hold the heart within others, and I want to thank everyone for allowing me to hold your hands in this amazing family. Thank you very much. Ready for some music to start?
One of the things I want to know is, what does he get for this?
He got $1,000.
Wow. What? He gets to stay at your house for a weekend.
Mine?
Yes.
Oh, I, well, we have that.
That is great.
So not only was that a great speech, and are you well deserving of this, but as I look around here this morning, you know, basically, it's all family this morning. I don't see members of the public, and so, but as I look at every face in this audience, I believe that that same feeling that you have is in every one of these young people. Some of them aren't young. Where's they at?
Ah, he's young. He's young.
But compared to me, everybody else is young. We're about the same age, aren't we? Well, but anyway, I really appreciate the court and the ladies who have helped us get this impact thing going. I think it makes a difference. I'm always able to brag everywhere I go about Midland County family and mean it. And so to everybody in this courtroom, the court appreciates everything you do, and especially you, Alex. Congratulations.
Thank you, Randy. We need to skip down to item nine. Judge Lindemuth's here, and he's got a court he needs to get back to, so let's discuss take action on hourly rate for relief bailiffs. Judge Lindemuth?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Bet.
I've had Veronica pull some numbers for last year. Right now, we're paying our bailiffs, our part-time bailiffs, $25 an hour. We haven't had anybody apply to be a part-time bailiff in a long time. I've said at least 12 months. We do have one now that is going through the process with Sheriff Painter, but it could have been in the last 24 months we hadn't had anybody apply, simply because we don't pay enough is the reality, is these guys are retired, either PD, SO, DPS, they've got the skills, but they can go to work for Concho, Pioneer, whatever, in their security departments. And while the work isn't as exciting, because it is exciting to be here as a bailiff, they get paid so much more is the problem. Last year, we paid a total of $32,725. That's an unusual year, though. Most of the courts are right around $2,000 a year for part-time. The 142nd was $5,000 over. Of course, part of that was because Caruth had retired, and so Judge Gillis had to have a part-time bailiff until he figured out who his full-time replacement was going to be. County court of law was $10,000 over the other courts, and that was, you know, simply because Jake Usfree was out for an extended period with shoulder surgery. So if I took then that into account, say by knocking off $10,000, it's become an extraordinary year, the increase would put us at about the same amount of money, I project $36,360, namely about a $4,000 increase of what we did last year. Right now, we've got one bailiff that we use for the most part, Joel Young. Wayne Schwartz came back just recently. We also have had Scott Casey. He's not here that much. Carl Rogers is not here that much. Troy Leslie, I think, worked two days. Primary last year was Allen Kilgore and Joel Young. Of course, Allen is now the 142nd bailiff. From reality, from a security standpoint, we need to have another person. We need to be able to attract and have a bigger pool, because the courts cannot operate without quality bailiffs. Judge or Sheriff Painter, make sure that we have those quality people that we need to attract. And I believe that by this increase, and again, I don't think it would be a substantial impact to the budget, that that would give us then a better basis to attract.
Judge, this would still be, or let me ask a form of a question. What is our current salary with burden for our current bailiff?
We're paying $25 an hour, and I don't know what the additional burden is.
No, no, no. I mean, I mean our full-time bailiff.
Oh.
Do you have any idea about what that is, Mitzi, a ballpark figure? What I'm trying to establish is that we're not going to create ill will with our existing personnel by doing this. Is that correct?
Correct. And I can tell you on behalf of the bailiffs that I deal with on a regular basis, namely the ones on the ninth floor, it would not, because they are struggling. We need additions.
Okay. But is that a true statement, Mitzi's about?
Our bailiffs are paid on a grade 18. That starting wage is $47,934. That'd be $23 an hour. Most of our bailiffs, though, are very experienced, and so they are probably on about step eight, nine, 10, 11.
Right.
That's getting up in the 68,000.
Right, and so if you add a burden of about another 30%, so this is not going to create the ill will. That's the only thing I was just wanting to make sure of.
That hourly wage is $33, $34 an hour.
Gotcha. Okay. But anyway, I'd be glad to make that motion. And where it would come from, is there a salary, a departmental judge? Or Mitzi, where would you recommend this come from?
They all have their part-time money in there.
Okay, so we already have that in there?
Yes, sir.
So I just make the motion that we would approve this hourly rate increase.
Okay. Commissioner, before we go to the second, I want everybody to understand, Judge Lindemuth and I talked about this, but it was after the budget was adopted.
That's correct.
So what's in the budget, we may run out of money, and I just want the court to be on notice that because of that, we may need to replenish it, which is fine.
Right.
So let me, I'm sorry, I have another question. So we're trying to go from $32,725 up to about $37,000? Because you said 36 and change, right?
That's kind of my prediction based on, again, what Veronica supplied me last month. She was very responsive and giving it to me.
Judge?
Forty.
Just a second.
Yeah, 25, 40.
If we can ask Commissioner Sanchez to hold that, because the procedure is, we have a motion. Is there a second? And then we'll have discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a second now. Is there a discussion? Go ahead.
No, that was just my question. So it's still the amount we agreed, asking for 37?
From 25 up to 40, not any particular amount, just to approve that, because I believe that we're going to make it through most of the year without having to change anything. And so.
So I'm sorry, could you clarify the motion then?
Motion is to increase the part-time bailiff from $25 an hour to $40 an hour.
Effective when?
Effective immediately.
Yes.
Is that okay, Mitzi, for timing? That's effective immediately.
And there's an account to pay it out of, and the court's duly noted that we may need to replenish it.
Right.
And we have a second.
Second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. You got it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Randy. All right, let's go back up and take number four. Discuss take action on court minutes from September 11, 25th, and 27th.
Judge, I'll make a motion. We approve all of those that I was present for. I believe I was not present for one of those meetings. The Wednesday meeting, perhaps?
Okay, so you're asking for approval with all except for the Wednesday meeting?
Right.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now let's talk about the Wednesday meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the court minutes from September 27.
Okay.
Second.
Have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much, guys. Number five, discuss take action on court fees from county and district clerk's office.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
You should have the information before you for the September fees collected for the district clerk and county clerk's office.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Number six, discuss take action, authorize can judge sign quarantine agreement between college and Midland County. It's a standard agreement we've had for years, but they're not here, so.
This is one you've reviewed, Russell?
I've reviewed it. It looks the same as previous.
Same as always. Make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Approve it. Authorizing judge signing.
All right, have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Number seven, acknowledge Judge Billy Johnson attending the best practices in handling cases of self-represented lettuages. He is not here. Do you know anything about him?
Yes, sir. Judge Johnson wasn't able to be here this morning, but he did want me to pass on the thanks to the Commissioners Court for supporting him and his best practices in handling cases. He said he learned a lot, and he's real appreciative of the court. And once again, he just wanted to send his thanks.
Okay, so this is just for acknowledgement.
Make that motion to acknowledge.
Okay. Second. Have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number eight, discuss take action on above rate per diem for emergency management in 238th District Court. Judge Lindemuth and Mr. Bunch. Bunch, yes, and we've got it here. They went to some workshops, and what we've all run into is the per diem doesn't cover the hotels.
He had to go to, as part of his professional development series, he went to Fort Stockton to school. And Fort Stockton didn't offer state-raise the hotels where he had to stay, so.
Yeah. And that's pretty much the same for Judge Leonard. So since the subject matters the same, if you, unless you got a difference of opinion.
I'll make a motion. We approve both of those above rate per diems for both judges.
Okay.
Where's that to, I'm sorry, where's the travel to?
To Fort Stockton?
Yeah, Fort Stockton, Ohio. And just a second, I'll give you District Court. Austin?
Austin, yeah.
And that was for the Meadows meeting that she and I are working on the mental health side for the county.
Second.
Have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We've done nine. Let's go to 10. Discuss take action on 218 Midland County Resolution ended indigent defense grant program Veronica. Yeah.
We're just requesting the court to go in and apply for the grant for indigent defense that we do on an annual basis, and just need your approval for the judge to sign that.
And there were some changes to the program that Judge Lindemuth made, but.
To the plan, yes, sir.
Yeah, to the plan, but they're all in line with what's going on in Austin.
I'll make the motion to approve the judge signing resolution.
Okay. Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that does pay for 1% of the cost, right? Still?
Yes.
Yeah, it's still fully funded at 1%. So, okay, we have a motion saying we voted. Motion passes. Number 11, acknowledgement in County Public Library Accreditation 2018 from Texas State Library and Cabs Commission.
Judge Commissioners, per our annual review, we submit the required materials to the state library, and we were approved for accreditation for the next fiscal year.
Cool. That's great.
All right.
Motion to acknowledge?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Number 12, discuss take action on the right can judge sign Miss America Midland Appearance Contract.
So this is, this is a weird thing. I got a call from a teacher, a teacher at General Frank's Elementary who happened to grow up in North Dakota and knows personally the current Miss America. She was, she was Miss North Dakota. They wanted to bring her down for a visit. She'd been working with the Miss America Organization and had heard through the Great Vine that we'd bring Miss Texas every year, and so we have some relations there as well. And so we're partnering with them, and we just want to make the use of her time if they're bringing her in. So they're going to do some school visits, they're going to do a library event, and she's going to speak at the Midland Country Club Ladies Association at lunch one day. And we just were in the best position, given our history with speakers, to kind of be the lead person for the contract. We're going to pay the fee, but then the Country Club Ladies Association and the Frank's PTA will reimburse us a portion of the contract.
Okay, so we're out fronting it, and then they're going to reimburse us, but not 100%.
No, sir.
Do you know how much that's going to be?
No. Those PTA hasn't met, and we've had a conversation with the Midland Country Club Ladies Association in the past. We've taken speakers out there. They've been very generous and contributed $1,000 toward the honorarium, but I can't commit for that organization.
Well, that's.
So the appearance, I'm sorry, the appearance fee is $5,000, is that correct? But we don't know how much is going to be reimbursed?
No, sir.
In addition to that, we have to pay for, for the, her flight, I think, for her, the person that comes with her, for that person's flight, two hotel rooms, meals, so the, in transport, ground transportation. Actually, I guess it says we would be driving her.
Yeah, so historically, because we have history in doing this, we put them up at the DoubleTree because we can direct bill that, and it comes out of my professional services line or event support line. They always, these contracts always ask for ground service transportation. We call them and explain, look, in Midland, we'll be in either a county vehicle or rental vehicle, we'll be covering our insurance, and someone from the county will be driving them. Typically, it's Edward or I. We do this like we would R.L. Stein or any other speaker that we would bring in.
Okay, but because we're at, we are the beneficiary to some degree, but we're advancing county funds and going to have a shared cost, I think we'd have to qualify it to declare the public purpose, certainly.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No, just maybe a little more about exactly what the benefit that the county will be getting from it as opposed to the other groups.
Yeah, so she would be, she's going to do an event at Centennial Library. Typically, with authors and speakers, we do a book signing or something. She'd make an appearance and do something with the youth services department and then be made available to sign headshots, take pictures. And then she would do an in-school visit like we do with, with the authors, because during the day, our audience is in school, so we have to partner with, with the schools, and then it just raises the profile of the county and the library.
Is it fair to say the county benefits by bringing an individual that heretofore has not been seen in Midland?
Yes, sir.
And it's a kind of a one-of-a-kind opportunity?
Yes, sir.
Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, sir. I believe it is.
Okay.
I do want to point something out on the contract. It does say that we have to provide meals, and let me see, what else?
You've got a beneficiary.
So typically, Commissioner, what we do is we try to partner with the foundation. The county can't do food.
Right, right.
So what we try to do is partner with the foundation. It's what we do with author visits, and I'm used to using that because it's what we have the history with.
Sure.
You know, we'll take them to Cancun's or somewhere and set up a tab, and then the foundation will, will go and pay that bill for us, or we'll just, I'll pay it out of pocket as my contribution, or we find someone that'll take them to the Country Club for lunch or the Petroleum Club for lunch. We have relationships with people where we make sure that their meals are covered. They typically get the free coupon and eat breakfast at the DoubleTree, but then lunch and dinner is usually provided by some sort of sponsor.
What's the date on this, John?
November 9th and 10th.
Okay. All right, gentlemen. Questions? Motions? More discussion?
I'd make the motion authorizing the judge to sign the Miss America Midland Appearance Contract.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. And Commissioner Ramsey, when you say sign the Appearance Contract, that does include paying the upfront fee.
That is correct.
And the second on that, understand it. Okay, there you go. Thank you. Motion passes. Thirteen, discuss take action on the right can judge sign Freegal Contract Renewal.
Freegal is the subscription, I guess it's a subscription, it's not a, it's for, it's where you download music and videos, and so you log in with your library card. It's a very popular service that we have had for my, my entire time here. People, it's kind of like a library version of iTunes, where people go in and they build their playlists and download it to whatever their device is, but we track, we've had, we have tens of thousands of downloads every year through this service. Anyway, it's just up for renewal. It is budgeted.
Okay. I'd make the motion that we authorize the county judge to sign Freegal Contract Renewal.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, it passes. Is this the legal, library ideas? Is that how it's referred to?
Jane Holt.
Christie, is that?
Yeah, here it is.
The Freegal?
Yeah, here it is.
I think it is.
Fourteen, discuss take action on out-of-state travel for Jane Holt to attend the Library Corporation Annual Conference Louisville, Kentucky, November 5th through 8, 2017.
Jane is the new Centennial Library Manager. She took over when Sharon Rowland retired. We stole her from Amarillo Public. Anyhow, Library Corporation is our integrated library system that kind of runs everything for us, and so she being new to our library system, we felt she was the best candidate to attend the conference this year and get brought up to speed on kind of our operations and the public access catalog. I mean, everything that the public interfaces with through the library is TLC, and it is budgeted.
Okay.
Motion to do out-of-state travel for Jane Holt.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Fifteen, discuss take action on additional funds for equipment furnishing for District Attorney's Office.
Good morning. Laura apologizes. She's in trial this morning, so she can't make it. When we were preparing our budget, we put in a, we got a quote for some lock boxes. When we went to go order those, we realized they gave us the wrong quote for the wrong boxes. So Christie was nice enough to give us a new quote. It's a difference of $257.60.
Okay.
And that would go in our equipment and furnishings.
And have to come out of contingency. There isn't anything, or actually, Madam Monitor, can we do this furnishings for courthouse?
I have a non-departmental.
Yeah, courthouse support.
Yes, sir.
That's a budgeted item which we use for bigger stuff, but this would fit.
Do you want to transfer the funds into their department?
If the court agrees, I would prefer that be the case. That way, it's not a contingency at this early date.
Okay. I'd make the motion that we add the additional funds from courthouse furnishing.
Maybe $258?
Yes, $258 from courthouse. Courthouse furnishings or non-departmental.
And courthouse support, is that what you meant?
Yeah.
From non-departmental building court support?
Yes.
Into the DA equipment furnishing line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Sixteen, not summary of all collections for 2017 in August. Karen is not here, so...
She did send the report.
Yeah, she did send it. Is there any questions on the report?
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number seventeen, discuss take action on free wireless internet at the courthouse. Russell?
Several weeks ago, the judge and I were contacted by a local attorney inquiring about being able to get free access to the Wi-Fi at the courthouse. Currently, other than employees, nobody else gets free access to Wi-Fi at the courthouse. We do, as I understand it, provide free Wi-Fi for the public at the library and at the horseshoe. I checked with Veronica, and if I remember right, the highest amount we've ever gotten in one year was about $2,000, is that sound right? And this year, and it's gone down each year, this year it's about $1,200 that we've gotten. So we're not really making much money from it. I had talked to Justin, and he said it would not be difficult to make that change to provide the free access, but I don't want to speak for him, so if he has anything else to add, that's when we come up. By the strength of his shoulders, I don't think he has anything else to add.
And this, this would have appropriate filters and stuff? Okay. So what's the pros and cons of changing?
Well, the, we, one of the, one of the pros is that we provided it at other county facilities for the public, and so I'm not really sure what the, what the reason would be for not providing it here, except this was the, I believe the courthouse was the first building we had Wi-Fi in, and so originally, we charged, and I think we didn't add the Wi-Fi to the other buildings until later. The, it just makes it easier for people who are at the courthouse and working to be able to access the Wi-Fi. I'm not aware of any downside for us, other than whatever downside we have at the other buildings.
Currently, we do provide free Wi-Fi at the horseshoe and at the libraries, but we do implement rate limiting at those locations, so that way, each person gets their own piece of the pie. Currently here, it's locked off, and we don't rate limit it per se, so I would ask if this is passed, that we can give IT's discretion to do that if it becomes a problem. That way, our bandwidth is shared among our employees and our guests.
But it's on the public side, right?
We have a public and a private side, but in the end, everything goes out one pipe. So we have one gig pipe coming in that's dispersed to the entire county.
Okay. So have you had somebody kind of squatting on it, using it, you need up our bandwidth?
And I think if the court does approve it, I would suggest that we do that, allow IT to determine in their discretion how limited.
How do you stop it? I mean, if somebody's just, as you said, squatting on it?
If people are squatting, I mean, we can kill that person's one specific ID, so they can't get on the network, but more than anything, what we notice is, is overall, we have, you know, 50 attorneys coming in here and they're streaming YouTube during the breaks, and, you know, everybody's using high bandwidth services. Then we'd have to basically implement a per-user limit to where each person only gets like one and a half megs or three megs, and that way, if we have 500 available at the time, no matter what's available, we only get that three. That way, we can give it up, and that's how we do it at the horseshoe. And there's calculations to bend on where you want to do internet browsing, video streaming.
Could you, could you limit on the Wi-Fi available to the public, could you limit it so that people wouldn't be able to access YouTube or anything like that that hogs a lot of bandwidth?
We almost have to allow those services because court trials access pretty much everything.
Oh, there, gotcha.
I'm not saying it's going to be a problem, I just say, let's, if it's allowed, let's just, if you can just give us the ability to do limited if it becomes a problem, we'll let you know.
Is there any specific cost to the county to do this?
Right now, infrastructure's in place. The only thing that's really implemented right now is authentication to access to one. We're just basically removing that and you would join at your discretion.
Why don't you give us, if it, if it's approved, why don't you give us a report in about 60 days? Okay. So this is what Mr. Carter wanted?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
I'd make that motion, and with the caveat that IT has given the ability to regulate.
Okay. You...
Second.
You want to start that?
When he wants to turn it on.
I can do it right now, okay?
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Eighteen, discuss take action, authorize the county judge to sign NeoGov contract. That's Bailey's software, I think. All right?
Yes, sir. This is software that was budgeted in the new budget. Basically, this will allow us to go to a paperless application system, should help speed up the hiring process as well, because it's all electronic and we can electronically shoot those applications to the department head or elected official instead of having to print paper copies, so we'll help with the process as well.
This is, we have the issue.
Hey, Russell, I've got it here, and it does say that Texas laws prevail, but again, I'm looking for the venue.
I think that that is in the, let me find the addendum. Looks like number three. Yes, sir. I added that in an addendum to the contract.
Well, that's...
This is 18A on the backup, I believe.
Okay, that's my fault, I didn't get, I didn't get to the addendum. 18A, Randy?
It's paragraph three.
Paragraph three.
Applicable law and venue.
Okay.
But I was looking for the, there was, there is one issue, and they agreed to everything in the addendum except for the language I added, where we would have a right to terminate or what, or either party would have a right to terminate upon 30 days' notice. They want to keep it to where we can terminate at the end of each year, but then if we don't terminate, it keeps going. And in the past, we've done that a lot, but we've also, over the past few years, had more and more situations where after we've entered contracts, people have become unhappy with them and wanted to get out of the contract, so I'm getting a little more hesitant about recommending contracts that, where we do not have the ability to get out either on 30 or 60 days' notice, but it's up to the, it's up to the court. If they're fine with that, then that's fine, but it is, it is somewhat limiting in case we want to get out.
You said this is on the addendum?
The, yes. It's in the backup, it's 18A.
Yeah, I know, I'm looking at it, I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
But we pay...
Two.
But we're paying $6,500 a year, right? And that's an upfront cost, that's the only thing that we'd have for the year, right?
Yes, sir.
It looks like $15,000. Am I looking, I'm looking at the bottom, annual recurring fees, 11 for 82, license 90.
Well, because there is training and then there's the software implementation, because it is compatible with New World, to where once a person's hired, you tell them it's hired, it automatically puts their information in, so the treasurer's office doesn't have to do that anymore, manually input all that information.
Then it goes up to $24,000. I had got to the bottom of the page here.
But the integration maintenance is only $1,500.
Oh, those are annual recurring costs, okay.
Yes, sir.
So I'm assuming we pay these at the beginning of the year? I haven't looked at the payment schedule.
Payment inception of the contract.
It's compatible with New World, so basically, once the department head or elected official says they're going to hire somebody, we tell the software that, and it will upload it into their information into New World for you, so we don't have to input all of that information.
But what is the actual software do before you, is it the applicant?
Yes, it's an application process. It lets us do paperless applications and background checks and all those things.
Background checks?
Well, that way, we're not printing out all of that information. It's all in one place.
The, Russell, in this deal, it says for each or no term, NeoGov will continue to provide customer services and will provide maintenance support, provided customer issues of purchase order modification of this agreement pays in advance, the annual recurring charge is then in effect. So I mean, we're paying, we're paying in advance for that, that year.
Correct, and the, and actually, if we, if the court wants to go with a, an early termination provision, we would also want to ask, and I did not have that in mind, but we would also want to ask that we get a refund if we do that, so I'm glad you pointed that out. So, Robin, we're paying $24,000 a year, it looks like?
Yeah.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Ask a question? I know, I don't know exactly what all the software is able to do, but I know that with your New World, we do have what they call eApplicant that allows for them to have a good tracking system as far as applications are concerned. I don't know if it does background checks or anything like that, but we do have some software that we already have available to us. It's called eApplicant through New World, so like I said, I don't know what, if it does the same thing or...
Should we table this until we...
Yes.
There is a desire by the court to table it at this time, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, Bailey, if you'd check with the auditor's office and make certain we're not...
We went through training with New World with the eApplicant process, and we've asked about it, and it's never been brought up that that was something that was purchased with the rest of the New World software until now.
So it's not, that module has not been purchased?
I don't know, I was not, I went through the training with it, but that's it.
Second, Justin?
I've talked to IT about it. I've talked to Justin about the software.
Justin, clear that, please.
We looked at this with Bailey a little bit, and the New World's application piece is the same price, pretty much, to get the license to do eapplication. NeoGov seems to be what every other county in Texas is using, and it integrates with our website that we're getting ready to implement, as long as we did it. It is a high cost, so it's basically determined on, you know, doing lots of applications.
Okay, but you're telling us it's the same product as New World's offering. We have not bought that module.
Correct.
So it's same dollars?
Pretty much.
Just which one do you want?
Pretty much.
Okay. Is the court...
I was hoping that, oh, sorry, one of the things I was hoping, if we do spend this kind of money on this, is hopefully getting the sheriff's office to utilize as well, streamline the treasurer's office process, and that would help justify the cost a little more if we, which we haven't even brought it up to them yet.
Well, can we, can we table this until we have an agreement with all the different departments, so we, we're in agreement on a single software? Would that be all right, Bailey?
Uh-huh, yes, sir.
So what, what's the court's motion?
To table.
All right, we have a motion to table. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, well, let's table this, and Robin, will you take the lead on this and find out? Yeah, what we need to know. Okay. Russell, here's the contract for you to make some additional changes. Thank you. Nineteen, acknowledge the quarterly and annual summary for warrant services. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning.
Thank you.
This is the, it's going to be the quarterly and the yearly report for warrant services. I'm going to actually start on page number three. It's going to be for July through September. For our office alone, we collected three...
You're too tall, man.
Sorry. We collected $328,244.11. That's our office alone. The combined collections, that is online collections from the courts or the county clerk's office, that is, people had their fees in jail or lay them out. The total combined is $411,278.21. For the yearly report, it's going to be actually the fiscal year from October 1st, 2016 to September 30th, 2017. Our office alone was $1,261,893.82. For the total collections, once again, justice courts, online payments, county clerk's online payments, it was $1.7 million.
Wow.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So these are the individual increases that you're showing on the right-hand side?
Yes, that is the increases for, they've got it broke down to our office, out of our office or off-site, and then the total on the, on the very bottom.
Looking good.
Other than that, what have you been doing?
Well, we did, we did submit the application for the grant. They needed a few changes on it, we've got that redone and submitted back to them. We're just waiting on them so far. And just collecting and updating our payment plans.
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and multiple seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I guess, John. Number twenty, acknowledge Midland County Sheriff's monthly fees. Sheriff, good morning.
Good morning. You have before you a copy of the stuff that we required to submit by statute, where the money went, how much money we collected. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions?
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay. So who's got the motion, who wants the second?
I'll second.
All right, Randy has the motion, but only seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-one, discuss take action, authorize the county judge to sign commercial ice machine lease agreement for cemetery.
Correct, we already have a lease agreement for the cemetery. This is just changing it so that it coincides with our fiscal year, but their billing purposes and our billing purposes. So we have a revised lease agreement to run along with our fiscal year. And Russell has one change, we're going to get that change made.
Is there a change in here?
It is not, but, so if you'll just wait for the, you can go ahead and approve it subject to the change, and then once the change...
So you need this?
I do not, sir.
Okay. All right.
Motion approved, authorizing county judge to sign commercial ice machine lease agreement, pending changes by county attorney.
Okay. The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Twenty-two, discuss take action to clearing items as salvage.
Yes, I need the court's permission to throw away a filing cabinet that belonged to Constable Gore. They found mold in the filing cabinet facility. Also, there were some items at SOCID. There was a desk that, they used it until the legs fell off. There was a piece of glass that went on the desk, and a chair that they used it until you couldn't use it anymore.
Well, let's hope they got a new one.
They did.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we declare all those items as salvage.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Twenty-three, discuss take action, authorize the county judge to sign LexisNexis agreement. Christie?
This is a budgeted item submitted from the library. This, I believe, is for the district courts, and it'll run February 1st, 2018 through January 31st, 2021. The monthly amounts are listed on the papers.
May I get a motion or a question?
I'd make the motion that we approve the LexisNexis contract.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Hearing none, that's it. Christie? We had that auction the other day, we had some people buy stuff they hadn't picked it up. Is that still the case, or are we all picked up?
We still have one person, I believe it's out of Mexico and I can't reach, that bought computers, or, I'm sorry, not computers, monitors, printers, TVs, miscellaneous items. That's the only one.
Okay. Got you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-four, discuss take action on purchase Palo Alto firewall. Justin?
So currently, Midland County has firewalls in place that are Palo Alto brand. They are in need of upgrade, and because of the price, thought of my brand to court because it's such a pricey item.
And the price is?
It is $118,580.
It's a budgeted item?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd make the motion that we purchase the Palo Alto fireworks, a firewall.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Twenty-five, discuss take action, authorize the county judge to sign C R W consulting renewal agreement. Justin? You got two more items. You have three more items.
I'm sorry. The number twenty-five was a last port as a duplicate item, so we could skip that.
Okay, twenty-five is not pertinent to today. So let's go to twenty-six, discuss take action, authorize the county judge to sign credit card agreement with Beyond. First, tell us who's Beyond.
Beyond is a credit card company, credit card processing company. Risa reached out, trying to find somebody to do the parking lot gate processing, guy that used to work for Heartland. They've, probably the owner of that company formed a company called Beyond. It's a no-contract, supposedly no-hassle type of company, the local guy. I know some of the businesses they're in, and they're happy with them. They don't have any hidden fees. And had a meeting with treasurer, one of the auditors, and, yeah, three or four people in that meeting, and decided that we proceed with this company.
Where are they based at?
At? I'm not sure. They have an office in Odessa, where they're based out of.
Okay, but there's no contract, so we don't have to worry about venue?
What's that?
We don't have to worry about venue if there's no contract.
We have to worry about just an agreement, and there's a third day out.
Okay, and for the court's benefit, that and twenty-seven are connected, but we've got to do the credit card first.
Yes.
Okay, so he's asked to use a local company for credit card processing. We seem to have a nod, an agreement about the treasurer's office and the auditor's office.
And the treasurer will be holding a bank account for the...
It's separated, separate account.
So she's, we've got that all taken care of. We just need to get the processor for this.
Justin, is this the contract we were talking about?
Yes.
If you would make any motion subject to my review and changes.
Yeah. Okay, so the request is to sign up credit card processing for the parking lot, item twenty-seven, with a company called Beyond, and Russell has properly asked us to make everything subject to his review.
Well, so what is the arrangement? Who gets what?
On the credit card process.
Yeah, what is the fee, or?
The fees are in the contract. I didn't spit it back up, because I was giving it to Russell for his review. Basically, they haven't given us the rates yet until we sign the agreements. We don't have to proceed, but we are going to start with some volumes of other parking garages that will assess what our rates are from Visa, MasterCard, and others. Then they will review our account every twelve months and adjust those rates accordingly. Currently, the rate is the credit card company percentage, and then there's a five cent transaction fee.
Okay.
There is no other fees on top of that, if I remember.
So it's about one and a half, or two percent?
It's going to be whatever Visa or MasterCard is, plus a nickel, and then, once a month, there's a one-time $20 fee.
Okay, if we approve this subject to, Russell, that still gives us the opportunity for you to give him some numbers. If we don't like the numbers, you can bring it back.
I'll scan and email the contract to each of you, so you can see that also. I think it has the information in it. I'll scan and email that to you. Justin, which other garages in town are they running?
They're not running either their garages, but they're running several locations here in town, retail and stores like that.
That do charge for parking?
Not charged for parking. Credit card processing is just a connection in. No, I didn't ask them if they did anything like that, but they do credit card processing, so.
But we're anticipating using this for our parking lot? Is that what I'm...
Yes.
What the story is? Okay.
That's what the next item is.
So typically, we use, when we use a credit card for the county, the end user's the one that's paying for the fee. In this case, is Midland County having to be responsible for some of that fee, Justin?
Yes.
Okay.
But it should be included in whatever fee we charge at the gate.
So currently...
I mean, we'll make revenue off of it, yes.
Currently, the way it works, and that is true, Veronica said, but one of the things I would like to talk to the court about, me and Veronica have talked about, is currently, yes, the end user is paying a fee, such as in the clerk's office. They're paying, say they make a dollar copy. Well, every time that transaction occurs, the end user is paying a $5 fee. So in essence, they're paying $6. They're paying a 500% fee on $1. Now, the credit card company's argument of that is, well, the end user pays the fee. You don't have to worry about anything. In this scenario, the end user's paying 1% to 4%. So whatever the credit card company charges, they're paying that. Our rate should be adjusted accordingly to adjust that end user's fee to be incorporated, and we still make revenue.
So it's a function of volume?
Correction, correctly. One of the things we've talked about, credit card processing, is why are the credit card companies getting the fees? We should be making something as a county. We can actually charge a fee. So in the clerk's offices, instead of charging a 500% fee on things, we actually could charge the end user 4% and make a couple percent off that, and actually be making money versus paying $5 out every time something happens. And actually create a revenue generating stream versus letting that money go.
We would always prefer to have a revenue generating stream.
Well, and that's one of the things we, if we generated our, one of the things we're starting with a credit card is with the parking lot gates. We don't have to pick this company for the future, but one thing that Midland County should consider is, no matter what credit card company we go with, is to go with one company. Because in the end, with Visa, MasterCard, and those other companies, our rates are based off volume. So if we combine those into one entity, and I talked to this guy about it, I said, you know, would this consider one entity, your departments would be considered their own? He said, no. The more you add into one entity, the more your volume is, the less your rates will be.
Okay, they can split out the different departments.
Correct, yes.
We're already using credit cards for various departments in our county. Why are we using a different company?
Currently, right now, those credit cards go through those particular softwares. So each software company handles a different, it's an interface within their own software. And I think, I'm not sure if that data, if it's the same company and processor, but it's whoever they have an API with. I've got a list of APIs with the parking gate guys, and this was one of them that we could directly interface. Without, most, if you go into a retail shop, you notice they got a cash register, that a machine decided, it's because they're not integrated. And we wanted the full integration, so you want to drag it up, swipe your card, and it's all done seamlessly, which has to happen for the credit cards at the parking gate.
I'd say we give it a whirl, but we'll have to judge it after...
And that's fine. I think this will just let us get started, and then let it prove itself. And the guys that presented it to us and the treasurers, they are pretty open to, this is not a binding contract, so anytime you want out, it's a pretty easy deal.
Well, there's no equipment to buy?
The equipment has been purchased through the gate company. So the gate company provides all the pieces, and they're just providing the gateway to make the transaction happen.
Okay. Justin, I would encourage you to suggest and work with Russell on this. Give them some volume, see what they look like. But stand firm on the revenue stream.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
We're the ones paying for it.
Well, and I don't know how the parking gate revenues will be per month, but I know that if we could bring other departments online, and it doesn't matter if it's this process or another one, the more our revenue is, the less our fees would be. And I know in the past, historically, we have not brought in non-department, I'm sorry, non-elected departments into the credit card business because of liability and elected official. I don't know if we could work out, I talked to Veronica briefly about bringing, see if the treasurer would hold those accounts. If we could bring somebody like pre-trial on, I know the revenues would be exponentially right away, which therefore the parking gate revenue wouldn't even matter.
Well, that would be something to talk to Scott about.
That would be something to talk to the court about as well, is how we bring other departments that, and I think me and Veronica, we had a conversation after we talked to credit card company, and there's a whole lot more to credit cards than what everybody was thinking past. So I think there might be some rethinking if the court agrees. But this is something I wouldn't even bring up to discussion today.
Okay.
So as Captain Kirk would say, make it so, Justin.
I don't know, I can do it by myself, but...
So out of curiosity, what you're talking about regarding the departments, I'm just trying to get an idea here, you would include, like, for example, the library, the horseshoe, people that have non-elected positions? Is that what you were referring to?
No, it's the same. In the past, we have always said no to getting credit card accounts for those places.
Right.
If we, if the court worked out a way to make that happen, that was kosher with the auditor, the treasurer, and everyone else, that would just be one more source. I brought up pre-trial, because I know that they have a lot of volume that's...
Just giving my reading endorsement to that, Commissioner. We would love for that.
Let's try to get back to the particular agenda.
The particular item that I was bringing for today is just getting the gates online.
Well, Randy, do you want to make that motion?
Yes.
And I would second the one to sign the credit card agreement.
Yeah, my subject two is negotiations between the judge and Russell and you with the, with that company.
And I'd make any motion subject to Russell's review of the documents.
Certainly.
Okay, so Randy, you have the motion.
Yeah, right.
Robin, you got a second?
Yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Now...
I'm sorry, so is that a motion to agree to sign the agreement?
Authorizing the county judge to sign credit card agreement.
Subject two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Subject two. And Russell can say, I'm not going to subject two, and then we're back to talking again. So now, let's go to twenty-seven, discuss take action on Barrett Street parking lot rates. Bring you up to date. We shoot them off the parking lot a couple of times to help out probation. They're back in numbers again. We tried some other things, directional flow. They're back in numbers. Some of them are pretty testy. It's their lot, they don't seem to understand. And then we've had some regular parking cars there. They're not in the way. We've been aware of them for years, belong to those businesses. And we talked to them briefly about, we'll create some monthly rate and give you a sticker put on your window that'll trigger this gate. This is all in an effort because the property was just overrun, and we couldn't even use it. So with that, we, as a court approved, instructing or asking Tim and Justin to come up with a parking solution, and it's done. The court approved it. It's in. Now what we have to do is trigger a rate structure that the court can agree on about using this lot. And it's a probability it will be two heavy users in the category of using it to go to municipal court, which makes them real happy because they're in court, and they'll come out. The other one is, when the Midland Center opens, this will be the closest parking to the Midland Center. And, yeah, rates will apply unless the court says no way, Midland Center. So that's the beauty of what Justin and Tim have come up with. For, in your packet, you have a list of examples of parking, pay parking at the airport, because most other parkings on a monthly basis downtown. We're free to set whatever rates we want to set. Set. So I'd ask you to take a look at this. We can do it today. We can postpone it until the next court. But the closest two things as to what we're offering, it says covered parking lot, that's close-in parking at the airport, covered. We don't have covered, but it's certainly close-ins, just across the street, or right behind the building. Another comparison is close-in parking lot, which is uncovered. That would be the second lot away from the airport terminal. Or we're free to set our own rates. It's just to talk it up to the court. Is this something you all want?
What is the current rate that the city's charging for downtown parking, or is it only just a penalty if you've been there more than two hours?
Randy, my understanding, in checking this last week, it's still just a penalty.
Because they have not installed the meters.
Right, it's just a penalty, but they are in the process, new budget to getting metered parking.
Right.
I don't know what those rates are.
The Wilco building is $3.
Or?
Just straight, $3.
All day long, or just per hour?
No, all day long.
Okay, so we could go with a flat rate?
Right.
Okay.
One thing I would ask out of consideration, too, is calculate your credit card percentage in there, too. So if you're going to do three, I'd say five, just to cover the overhead costs.
Okay. I don't know what the meters are in that area as well.
I don't think we want to encourage people to use that as parking for, all day long, for their businesses or whatever. This is mainly for the convenience, people that have to do business with the city, or...
Yeah.
Or with the worship. So I would do it an hourly rate, at least...
Well, there's, there's really going to be two levels if we stick to the first conversation we had, and that would be those four or five cars that work in those businesses who have been very friendly and said, just give us a monthly rate, we'll pay.
Okay.
Okay, then you've got the user, which is the daily rate, or the going to some shindig at night. And don't forget, this parking lot will also support PBS when it opens, and the historical museum, and some other things.
Judge, you mentioned that to allow people who have been parking there to do a monthly rate. So what about people who, as soon as they find out that it's there, and they'll feel like, well, you know what, I'll pay that monthly rate, too. So where do we stop? I mean, what if that being a parking lot?
You do run that option, but I think you do that by putting a rule in place that says the monthly rate's only applicable to those buildings that face them, or back up to that parking lot.
And will we have some parking spots where, that are going to be available? For example, let's say there's going to be a row and says only people who will be here for, for county business? I mean, they're going to be here for an hour, for 30 minutes?
Well, part of this effort is, certainly, we need to carve out in a more noticeable fashion down on the south end, a number of spaces for probationers.
Right.
Because that's really where this all started. We couldn't even get the probation people in there. And once you do that, and then when they move, you can take those spaces up, and you can reserve them for visitors to the historical museum, or, or no reservations. It's totally up to the court.
I would say, if we, if you all want to just further discuss some of this, at least get something we could start with, so when we install the gates, we can get them up and going, and we can adjust it.
Okay, because they...
I'd like, I would like a sliding schedule, like from one to four hours, $3. From four to 12, or, let's see, four to eight hours is, would be five. 12 to 24 is eight, and over 24 would be $12.
$12 per?
Per day.
Per day? Is that a motion, or is that a discussion?
Well, I would, I would put it in motion.
Okay.
I'm not clear whether you're over 24, Robin. What does that mean? Because if you're using it every day, like a monthly deal?
Well, if, if you leave your car there, then it would be $12. So if, if it goes outside the 24 hours, you're, you're paying a disproportionate amount.
But you don't want them just abandoning the car there?
Well, I mean, that's, right, we wouldn't want to abandon the car there, but my, my theory is that they wouldn't do it, but you might have someone that, that feels like, well, I'll leave it there, and that'll, it'll lapse.
Yeah.
So that it'll start again next, the next day, and won't register the 12, the 24 hours.
Right.
It'll just pick up on the, on the daytime. This after the 12, 24 hours, the clock starts ticking again? Right.
Yeah, that was my, that was my point.
That's why I said over 24 hours, it's 12 bucks. So you, you put that in.
Well, but now, you don't want him in there for a whole week, for one $12 payment.
Right.
Right.
Because if he leaves it a week, it would be 12, it would be 12 hours per day, which is about $80, $80, $80 a week.
72.
72. Yeah, $72 a week.
Okay. Do you want to put that in a motion, or do you want to just keep talking about it and bring it back next court?
When are you going to have the...
I'm hoping to have him install this week, if everything goes correctly.
Can we put signs up in there?
I'm fine with that, just so we can come back and...
I'm fine with that, just so we can come back and find out how it's working and adjust if necessary.
Okay.
And we have to come up with, as you said, some kind of monthly.
We still got to get the stickers, or do they come with them?
Everything's here right now. And there's businesses apparently already asking about the monthly.
Yeah, there are businesses asking.
Oh, wow.
And what would you, Randy, what would you do on a monthly basis?
Well, probably at least 100.
Might go higher than that.
Right. Right. We're, those are competitive with what we're charging, paying for where we're at.
Yeah, it might be 150, $50 a week.
Well, let's...
Why don't we just set it at 100 then?
It's like cameras on a film, you want to get them using, using it.
I think 100 would be good for now, and then whenever the city comes out with their, their parking structure, whatever it is, is that what we can kind of compare? Because right now, we're kind of just, you know, it's a shot in the dark, we really don't know.
What might happen is there might be so much demand that people will, they might fill the thing up, and so we might need to adjust this pretty quickly.
Do we need to also just limit the amount right now to how many people can use it outside of, I mean, on a monthly basis?
True.
I don't know, how many parking spaces are there?
Tim's not here, I think Tim is here, what am I saying?
I was going to go look and see if he was here. There's, I can get you the exact amount, but I believe there's close to 120 spots.
And do we know every day that municipal court operates about how many people are involved in that?
It varies by how many people are, have to come in.
It's not just those attending court, we discovered in the progress, it's a lot of their employees.
Right. There's a lot of people use it and a lot of people are using it. In fact, that's one thing I wanted to bring up, we're probably going to need to do some kind of a release, tell them that it's not going to be a cut through anymore because we're going to have to block off the exits on the north side, we're going to chain those off and make it where it's a circular in and out. So, and people, a lot of people are cutting through there as a shortcut to get from one street to the other, so we may need to tell the news media that, you know, it's going to be closed.
I bet we'll tell them.
Sure, here, okay.
They're here.
If you want an exact amount, I can go get it pretty quick.
One last thing we got to decide today, but we talked about, was doing an event parking rate too, but we can talk about that at a later time, but if y'all be thinking about that, if there's some event going on, having that rate set and how that's determined and who can implement that.
I think the most important thing for me would be that as soon as we implement this, whatever it is at the rate we're looking at, for us to go ahead and set aside like 20 or 25 parking spots to make sure that those are only going to be used for the people that are using the probation building, because if we open it up, fills up, then it defeats the purpose. Again, we're going back to square one where we don't have any room for, for the visitors to be there. And I'm even thinking about the employees, I don't know if the employees are parking there, and if they are, are there specific spots for the employees to park?
What's going to have to happen before we implement this is facilities and have it restripped. When it's restripped, those will be designated before we get going.
Okay.
Because we're going to have to re-strike it to accommodate the U-shaped pattern, and that's going to happen whenever we implement the gates.
Okay.
And we will designate those parking spots some way that we can go back and cover it up because obviously they're moving.
So, Robin, your motion could, could be something that we could do for a trial basis and everybody, knowing that this will be reevaluated in 30, 60 days or whatever?
Yeah. I'd like to make the motion that we set the rates at one to four hours is $3, four to eight hours is five, eight to 12 is eight, 12 to 24 is, is 12, and over 24 is $15 per hour.
Did you say?
I'm sorry, is, is $15.
Eight to 12 is $8?
Yes.
12 to 24 is 15?
Is, is 12 and then over 24 is 15.
Okay. What will be the monthly rate?
And the monthly rate would be $100.
Okay.
And this would be subject to facilities restriping and designating appropriate parking spaces for probation and for the local businesses.
Okay.
Do you want to do a weekly rate as well or just monthly? What if somebody just needs it for a week?
Well, but your $15 per day is the, would be the...
The 100.
Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
I think it would be easier if we just did a monthly and then had it, because the way it's going to work, just in case everybody's not familiar, is if you have a monthly spot, you're going to get a sticker from us, you're going to protect your windshield, like you do with the car wash, some of the car washes. Anybody else that doesn't do that, you're going to drive up to the gate, print a ticket and therefore keeping up with the ticket on a weekly basis, that'd probably be a little bit more difficult than...
I understand.
Associated with, excuse me, Robin, you have a motion, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Second on the motion, a little more discussion. One thing that Justin's made me aware of, and that's from other companies that have gates and what their experience is, there will be some people coming out of court who won't be in the best mood, and they'll just drive through the barrier and tear it up. So what those entities have done, and I would encourage us to do the same, is craft some action that we could take, because we will have a photo of the license in the car, and pursue that, because we know it's going to happen. Okay? And I think there would be some language that would need to go on the ticket, also about liability and things left in the car. Okay?
Are these breakaway gates? I mean, are they designed now so we can, you know, it's just not going to tear up the whole, should match it?
No, it'll just tear up the arm.
Just the arm, it'll break?
I'm told so far.
Okay.
And you have some extras of those?
We don't right now, but I get so... There will be bollards around the rest of the structure, so it should be protected.
But, but that piece is just something I'd ask Russell to work on and bring it back to us. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post same sign, motion passes. Justin, we appreciate you and Tim going and getting information that is suitable to us.
No problem.
Thank you. All right, 28th, discuss take action on movement, court meeting dates. This has come up in light of the ruling that we got from the AG that we have to meet for bills. And we got...
Payroll.
And, yeah, that's a bill, payroll's a bill.
Not according to the...
I did email y'all a new calendar this morning, if you look in your email.
And again, we don't have to decide today, but the number that you've asked about it, it's not a bad idea to move our court dates to match up with those payroll dates, which typically would be a Wednesday. Now, years ago, when I was a commissioner and we talked about moving court dates, we ran into discussions of this nature. If the legislature's meeting, it plays hack, because most county hearings are on Wednesdays and Thursdays. There were other issues, I don't recall exactly, but I think the sheriff was involved with them and it kind of caused us him some issues. Those may, may have cleared up. But if you don't do that, then we're going to be meeting every week. And it's up to the court. Now, we're having this meeting today for business, but we're going to meet Wednesday for payroll, bills, payroll. And that's going to be the pattern.
The only thing that I can think of right now, Judge, is the vast majority of our county conferences and things like that always happen where they start on Tuesday. Because I guess overall, everybody has court on Monday, so that would be the only other thing that I can think of that would be happening where, I mean, we just have to miss on those Wednesdays or not go to those conferences until after Wednesday.
If you move it to where you need full court action and they match up, we do need full court, because there's a lot of hubs that require five members here. If we don't, those Wednesday meetings are subject to simple majorities, so you could rotate through and one of you or two of you get, you know, in every other meeting or something, I don't know, or we just play it as we can. But my understanding, Russell, correct this if we're wrong, in the ruling, we can't pay the payroll unless we have a court meeting to approve it.
Every, every bill has to be approved by the court before it's paid.
So there's no pressure unless you don't want anybody in the county to get paid.
Explain to him again why we can't anticipate what the payroll is, since it's always known, I mean, or is it not known?
The, the statutes basically say that the, the treasurer cannot pay any particular, make any particular payment until that specific payment has been approved by the court. Like, for example, with payroll, at the time of the, at the time of the budget, when the budget's adopted, you have a certain, certain employees throughout the year, employees leave, new employees get hired, so you don't even have employees who were working here when the budget was adopted. So, so even the blanket approval of the budget doesn't cover those employees, but the, the statutes do specifically say that each payment has to be approved by the court before the treasurer has authority to pay it.
Yeah, but why can't the, so what is it that the treasurer or auditor cannot anticipate what Wednesday's payroll is going to be for a Monday morning meeting?
The, because you, you really, you have to, you have to approve the actual bill, not just kind of an estimate or guess.
A bill can exist on Monday morning.
You can't, you can't approve an estimate, you got to approve the actual check.
What is different between what's going to change from Monday morning to Wednesday afternoon?
Yeah, payroll's not complete yet.
Well, what?
It's not complete till Wednesday. We're still entering.
Time sheets.
Entering changes, time sheets coming in and out.
You may have people getting paid less or getting paid more for different reasons.
But you can't know that?
No, sir.
Something, something new is known between Monday morning and Wednesday afternoon?
We also don't get payroll until usually on Tuesday morning for our office to audit payroll or payroll changes, so anything that we may be able to find, you therefore can't pay that employee that, that there's a change to, per se.
So changing all that would take, would be harder than just having an extra meeting on Wednesday, in other words?
I don't think it's feasible for us to have that available to you on Monday, Commissioner.
No, sir.
So if you did move it to Wednesday, you could work under the scenario of two meetings a month is your actual meeting plus payroll. Then the other two meetings, two of you can pick one day and the others can pick the other day. Luis, you make a good point, all our schools start on Tuesdays. Well, that's somewhat a problem. We have hearings, I know Motor and the NPO and those, they have events in the middle of the week. I mean, we're just going to meet a lot, thanks to the ruling.
Judge, the other point I wanted to make is, you know, throughout the year, of course, we meet the second and fourth Monday, but the way payroll works, those payrolls might not end up on the second and fourth Wednesday either. We're going to have to go back and change those dates as well as the calendar goes through, so every six months. It's going to have to be the second and fourth and the first, third and fifth, and then, so that's the other problem that I foresee if we do it that way. I mean, we're going to have to be changing commissioners' court every six months.
Yeah, you do, you get two dates a year where you got three payroll dates a month, but you only have two court meetings. And then I know Jenny and I were working on this Friday, and it's not impossible, it's just something you hadn't ever thought about when you had holidays in. But I agree with, with Robin, I don't agree with the ruling at all, but it's the ruling.
And I would say it could be in the next legislative session, it's something that could be easily changed through legislation.
Rest assured, there will be a bill. Fact, there's a bill being drafted, so...
But that's not for two more years, right?
Yeah, right.
And I did notice that what we got in the last court session, item number 36, I was checking the dates and it didn't make any sense to me at all. Has anybody run these dates through your, through the, what we're talking about to see if it matches anything?
The commissioners' court dates?
No, the, well, let's see.
I think that's the payroll dates that Mitzi sent in.
They're trying to add payroll dates into, but I've got one on a Tuesday and I got, I mean...
We changed those, Commissioner, we did point those out.
Okay.
They were changed on the calendar.
Okay, so is the, is the one you sent out, Mitzi, to our iPhones, is that the current proposal?
That, what I sent you this morning, those dates highlighted in yellow are actual pay days, so you would need to meet two days before that, every single one of those to approve payroll. So in November, where we're paid on the 22nd on a Wednesday, you're going to need to meet on Monday. In March, we're actually paid on a Thursday, the 29th, you're going to need to meet on two days before that. The rest of the time, Wednesdays is great.
Then you've got another scenario, comes up over the Christmas holidays, where we'll meet and actually could have the last court meeting like the 20th. That's been our methodology the last several years. But you end up with a payroll date and some bills on the 27th, or 26th, 27th, I believe.
This year, it's actually on the 22nd, Friday, the 22nd is a payday, so if you met on Wednesday, the 20th.
Right, right. But then we have had an odd meeting to pay bills at the auditor's request.
And then the fourth Monday's the 25th, so...
Has the, has TAC or CUC contacted Attorney General's Office to do a correction to this?
I can only speak for CUC, and yes, they have, and they said, "You got the ruling, that's what the rule is."
It's, I understand completely the frustration with it, but it's, it's just, it's really a correct interpretation of the statutes, it's what the legislature has done. And there are many, many times I've disagreed with rulings of our Attorney General, but this one is, is accurate. And in, over the past decades, all across the state, to avoid having to do this, we've all just kind of rationalized that we could, we could do kind of the pre-approval, but it was just really more of a rationalization. But under the actual language of the statutes, this is correct interpretation.
Randy, there are multiple bills being drafted to correct this, because everybody's just pulling their hair out over it. And I agree with Russell, it is, appears to be the right interpretation.
So do we think all the counties are going to be adjusting like we are, or we've got only one?
Yeah, they are, and the cities also. I mean, it's playing hack with the whole system. But the problem is it's being fed somewhat, we had to go to the time management system, which none of us like, but it was a requirement that or pays some fines. So this is just the next phase at the local level of how you make payroll and how accurate it has to be. I agree with Russell, I think it will get changed next session, but right now, that's not it. I'm going to offer this and we do whatever you guys want to do, but it is so complicated, it's gymnastically exciting, I guess, to some extent. I'd ask you to take a look at this with what Mitzi sent you this morning, kind of what your schedules are, what your schools are. We can talk about it on Wednesday, no action, and we can maybe take action next court, but it has some significant disruptions, the least of which nobody's talked about, and that's the public. That is, for years relied on us having court on Monday. And then they're good to come Wednesday, and next month, it'll be a Wednesday and a Monday and a Friday, and it just gets complicated.
A problem I see in changing the dates is that people have become so accustomed to it, back in 98, prior to 1998, County Attorney's Office in Midland County always handled misdemeanors. In 98, it went to the District Attorney's Office. We still have attorneys who don't seem to understand that we don't do misdemeanors yet. For more than a decade after that, people in the probate, adult probation office who worked there kept thinking that we did it, even though we'd tell them again and again, and I think it's, it, if you change the days, it's, there will be people who will have a problem getting used to it just because it's been this way. Not, that should, that's not the only factor, just something, another seed for thought.
If you all agree, I would encourage us... If you all agree, I would encourage us independently, and certainly when we're together as a group, take a look at what Mitzi sent you, match it up against the schools you go into. Let's talk again on Wednesday, and hopefully take action at the next court meeting.
Judge, can I also bring one other thing? I know through the, for the Horseshoe Promotions account, the court had approved me making those payments, but as of, because of this new ruling, I won't be able to make payments without court approval, so.
Thanks for reminding me that. The horseshoe's the best example, but we have some other contracts that conflict with the Wednesday. I'm saying that wrong. They conflict with our court date and the payroll date. They're okay with the payroll, but they depend on the court date because they're referenced in the contracts. Certainly, we can change those contracts.
Well, here, so here's one more, just food for thought type of question that I have. It seems like it might be easier to take care of our business at 1:30 rather than at 3:30. Is that, but does anybody else agree with that or disagree with that?
You know, moving court to 1:30?
No, the, no, no, the.
On the Wednesdays?
Payment of bills on the Wednesdays, as 1:30 as opposed to 3:30 or 4, you know, whatever. Because that way you can still plan business for most of the day and just stop by after a board meeting or a luncheon or whatever and take care of our business here.
Commissioner, I believe that the way we came up with the 3:30 when, when we were sitting around talking about it was, and we asked Jenny what she thought might work out best for the court, so I think that's what that sort of came from.
So that's flexible?
So I think if, if that interferes with the treasurer and auditor, then I think that, y'all, you can change that.
It would be, like, for example, on Wednesday of this week, I already have scheduled to represent Midland County at a school that, that, I may end up being the only one there representing Midland County, and I don't wanna, but anyway, so, but, but if I could swing by at 1:30, I might could take care of something and still take care of my, that's just me, it has nothing to do with anybody else. But, so anyway, my question is, is if we're gonna do this, is 1:30 less of a problem or any kind of problem compared to 3:30 for anybody else?
1:30 is fine with me.
You know, we, we were trying to, at the time, when we were looking at it, we were trying to do the easiest thing for you guys.
Right.
Was it break up your day right in the center of your day? Or get more towards the end of your day? We even was leaning towards 4 o'clock, and, you know, how late could we make it to where it doesn't just tear up the middle of their day? So, that's sure up to you guys.
In other words, my day's already broken up because of nuns. In other words, board meetings and different things I do, so I could just swing by and do something then, which wouldn't wreck up the rest of my business if it was, if anybody else didn't have a problem with that.
Normally, normally we'll be ready at 1:30 unless something goes bad wrong, and we'll, we should be ready at 1:30 if you'd like to.
Robin or Luis, or I saw Scott just said 1:30 is fine with him, does y'all, does that present a problem for y'all to do at 1:30 rather than?
Doesn't.
3:30? Mike, does it present a problem with you?
No.
Any department heads or electives that that matters to? Of course, most of you won't be available, won't need to be at that meeting anyway, so.
But please remember, as we do this, which we gotta do, it does require three of us.
Right.
And the more punctual we are about being here and acting, the quicker we get it out of the way, because it's just a fact of life.
And that does bring up something we've talked about several times in the past, is, for this kind of a meeting, for this kind of an agenda, it's so set, so fixed, and is there a way to do it by Skype and/or voice?
Unfortunately, not. The, the Open Meetings Act requires that you have a quorum here present. If you have a quorum, then there, under certain circumstances, somebody can participate via video, but it is, but you can't have like two people here and then a third from somewhere else to make a call. Yes, sir, it's under the Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention, I'm sorry, that this coming Wednesday has already been posted.
Right, and, and the other thing is, we post these things together, and so Wednesdays are pay, payroll. They're not to discuss and take action on other things. They're payroll, get in, make the move, let them pay it, let's go. It's why we have sometimes lengthy court meetings. The other thing that is certainly a factor, we're under the video streaming rules now. Thanks to Justin and Mike and the IT folks, you can see the cameras in the back, these are new cameras. And Russell's exactly right, we better have three bodies sitting up here. Midland County is, I think it's the law now, but before it was the law, we are on record as not allowing proxy voting. And I, I wouldn't encourage that we ever change that. We get paid to come vote. So if that's agreeable to you guys, take a look at all these odds and ends, and look at your business schedules, and perhaps we can talk a little bit on Wednesday, but certainly have a next court meeting to either do something or not, unless you've got something today you wanna talk about in the motion. Okay? So I'd ask that we table this till the next court meeting, but get some kinda direction on Wednesday. By the way, who's gonna be here on Wednesday? I know I am.
Well, there's a school on Wednesday, so.
I know. Scott's gonna be here, I'm here.
I'm gonna be here.
Is that CUC?
There we go.
I don't want to be late this time.
Nothing like it. All right. So 28 is tabled, lacking other sensible solutions. Which we'll take up next year. 29 is gonna take action on fireworks at the horseshoe. Let me explain what's behind this. When we constructed and started the horseshoe and has been in place up till today, we had a embargo on fireworks. That embargo was for two principal reasons. One, we were always under construction, and we had a lot of activity like that going on. Secondly, we were a little concerned about the adjoining property, which is a grass field to the west. We now own that property. So, here you go, guys, here's, here's maps. So now, we've had no need to come back to it, except we do have the Franklin Graham event Thursday out there, and they're at the amphitheater, and they're taking part of the interior. They have a professional fireworks team that travels with them, and has provided, the colored map I handed out to you, has provided the information, says they'd like to shoot four-inch shell, shells on the west side by the outdoor arena. Now, here are the elements to that. Dale, go out and meet with them, he's done that, he's come back. We have a guest from, I got that one, city, and nice to see him here. Glad to have them, anytime. But the reality is the following. That rule is in place for the two reasons I gave. It is now a court decision to continue it or take it up on an individual basis, or whatever the court's pleasure is. There are other elements that deal with some of our concerns, or some of the conversations Dale and I've had, and that is, okay, you're shooting them on county property, yeah, there's an interstate to the south. Well, 4th of July, we shoot them in Hogan Park, and there's a loop right to the north. The Rockhounds shoot them a fair amount of time for other events, and they're right there near the loop. So the, the look-alikes are certainly prevalent. This is a professional show versus Scott and I going out behind the garage and setting the law, which would be a huge mistake. Dale, go ahead and tell us what's happening.
Judge is right, this is a professional show, and, and David Hickman, the city fire marshal, is also here with us. This thing came up a little over a week ago, was the first I knew about it. And when David called me about a permit that had been submitted for fireworks at the horseshoe, apparently the contract was already signed, and, correct me, Joe, if I'm wrong, but it had already been signed and everything, had been taken care of before they filed it or before they talked to us about it.
Wrong. They, they talked to us about everything except the fireworks, and they knew it was subject to the court.
Okay. Well, the permit came out, and the permit was denied because, like the judge said, it's proximity to, to the, the high-speed traffic on the interstate. I put some pros and cons together. The pros on it, it's a professional shoot, spectators will be at a safe distance. Where they've, looking at, shooting it is all the way to the end of the horseshoe, which they're expecting the people to be able to see it out of the amphitheater, and that's gonna be very difficult. If it, if it does go, it'll have two sheriff's deputies at all times that the fireworks are on the property, fire truck and EMTs on site. But, we're also looking at the, at the cons of it, it's 1,300 feet north of a high-speed interstate. The wood shavings pile is within 224 feet of it. Now, the map that y'all have, and I'll get David up here in a minute to speak about it, but the map that y'all have on that says 280 feet, I believe, radius. Actually, when you file a permit to, for four-inch shells like this is, it's 400 feet. It's one inch, or 100 feet for every inch the shell is. All the way up to 560 feet, depending on what kind of four-inch shell it is. So we have that wood shavings pile within 224 feet of the, of where they're wanting to shoot it, so that would have to be moved completely.
Dale, wait a minute, let me ask you, you said the shavings piles at 220 feet. Where is it? It's, on this map, it's outside of the 280.
That's outside of the 280.
So it's not 220 feet, it's outside of the 280?
It's 224 feet from the edge of it, you know, where they'd be shooting.
Why do we have a wood shavings pile out here? Where did it come from?
It's a moist product that's taken out of the stalls, and you have to dry it out in the sun before you can dispose of it. So it's got moisture content, and unless, I'm not aware of something else, the dry shavings are in secured storage facilities on the property.
But these are shavings that come out, they've got other waste products mixed in.
It's 460 feet from that oil well. So, when it came about, it was denied, because we've always denied it. The city sent back a denied permit to bring them inside the city limits, even though it's county property, it still has to come into the city limits with the fireworks to be displayed. So, David, would you like to say something about it?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, David, nice to have you here again.
Judge, good to see you, sir. I've had some eye surgery recently, and forgive me for that.
No.
I'm glad to be here before the court this morning. Good morning, everyone. I'm David Hickman, I'm the fire marshal for the city of Midland and the fire code official for the city. When this permit first came across my desk, I had very severe reservations about it. My biggest concern is the proximity of the show to the interstate and to the possibility of distracted drivers along the interstate. And, that, that's my biggest concern. It's a professional show, I've done, I've supervised hundreds of these shows. I'm very aware of the conditions that they create, from debris fallout to blowing smoke, depending on weather conditions. And also, again, the biggest concern, we're all aware of distracted drivers, especially along the interstate. And that was my biggest concern for this, this show, and, and that's why consulting with my staff and coming to a consensus is that we decided to deny the show because of the relationship of the, of the display to the, to the interstate.
David, a couple of questions, understand your concern at the interstate. Do you have that same concern when they shoot them at Rockhounds Stadium?
No, sir, I don't. However, if I may elaborate on that, we do have, had some close calls on the, on the Loop 250. We've had people that will pull over to the side of the road to watch the displays, and that's been a very, very big concern for us. We've had, again, we've had some, I've seen, personally seen some close calls, but actually having an accident, not to my awareness that there's one, but however, the potential is there, and especially the potential along a very, very active interstate. One accident, one accident, and could produce bodily injury, death, and could disrupt interstate commerce for hours from having a distracted vehicle accident.
Is it fair to say?
That's our biggest concern.
Okay, sure. Is it fair to say that same scenario exists at the Rockhounds and at the Hogan Park episodes? You have high-speed traffic around them. What's your opinion on that?
I didn't hear you, sir.
On the 4th of July, we do it, and there's people?
We, we do, the, the, the loop is, I'm sorry, I'm speaking right away. The loop does have high-speed traffic, 60 miles an hour, and, and I know the interstate has been reduced to 65. However, there's still quite a bit of high-speed traffic, and the volume of traffic on the interstate was my biggest concern in relationship to Loop 250, or Big Spring, or Lumisa.
Okay. And this is on county, and why the city got involved, we always try to make them aware, good neighbors. And the actual location of the shooting site is in the county, but it, it does produce what Mr. Hickman's talking about. So, if y'all have questions, Dale or Mr. Hickman, please.
I do, this is Commissioner Sanchez, you know, right west of where the location is, there's a drilling pad right there next to it. And of course, as we know, there's an industrial area right north of this. In your opinion, Mr. Hickman, do you think that should be taken into consideration when talking about these fireworks because of the drilling, the, well, I mean, it's just the oil pad that's right there, plus the industrial area, industrial loop that's right behind it?
They, what, what kind of concerns do you have for those?
So for example, if, you know, God forbid that something happens with these fireworks and they just start going all over the place, there's a actual pump jack right there, I don't know, I wouldn't know how many feet that is.
Yes, sir. That whole battery is, belongs to Endeavor, that is a permitted battery in the city limits. That battery has a fire protection system associated with that, and any event of any flames or fire, that system at the battery, per se, would shut down the entire facility for, for that operation. Potentially, the, the battery has flame detectors, and the discharge of the fireworks could shut down that entire operation.
Thank you, sir.
For that one battery. As far as the fire concern, I'm not, I'm not concerned for fire conditions, though I know we've had quite a bit of moisture lately, the vegetation's a little, little wet. However, again, according to the permitting and the authority that I have as a fire code official, I can shut down a fireworks show completely, even during the commitments of it for safety concerns that I see. Either blowing smoke across, across the interstate would be a big concern for us, and also falling debris carried by the wind conditions, I know the predominant winds are out of the south, however, we're having a cold front tomorrow, it's supposed to be 43 degrees in the morning. The wind conditions were Thursday, I'm not aware of, however, we could have blowing debris and smoke going across the interstate, which would force the shutdown of the fireworks display immediately. For any, for any due cause.
You know, I just wanna make a comment real quick to this court. A few years ago, there was a huge fire that occurred here in Midland, the vast majority of that fire happened in my precinct, and I had a lot of people, well, I shouldn't say a lot of people, there was a handful of people who lost their home, and I am concerned about this because right around this area, there are homes right north of it, there's nothing but open fields, I understand that there's, you know, it's been wet here lately, but again, the winds out here in West Texas, we weren't, we didn't think that that fire was gonna get out of hand, and it got out of hand. And it got so bad out of hand that when people, they started bringing people to the horseshoe, let me remind you that then, then they started evacuating people out of the horseshoe because the fire was going straight to where we were at. So these are just some of the concerns that I have, again, I do represent this area and I do have to take into consideration. Again, I do represent this area and I do have to take into consideration the losses that we've had already in the past when something got out of hand. Not saying that this will get out of hand, but I just want to make sure that I bring this up to the court that, that we've been in this situation before and I'd hate for us to be in that situation again.
My, if I may, my professional opinion as being the fire marshal, I've been in the, the fire inspector for 18 years, investigator, and I've been in the fire service for 36 years. In my opinion, this show should be denied, in my opinion.
Can I ask, is this gonna, is this gonna be held in, in the amphitheater? Is that right?
It's got two components. It's in the amphitheater and they've now taken part of the pavilion.
So, they're gonna have a video feed for those?
They're gonna have a video feed, yeah.
And how high up do these shells go? I mean, I think it's mentioned somewhere where it's going to be partially blocked by?
Well, it can be blocked by any building on the property, depending on where you're sitting. But the, all I've got is that they, they've done them before and they do a video.
If I may, gentlemen, these shells can go up to 300, 400, 450 feet high.
Okay. Is, if, if it was denied, is this going to adversely affect the, the program?
I don't read it that way. I believe there are, and Joe, if I'm saying this wrong, tell me. When they contacted us, they have various segments. They have the music segment, they have the actual presentation, they have security, then they have the fireworks. And, and they deal in segments. Is this gonna deny the show at the location? I don't think so. But is that right, Joe? It's just something they carry, carry around. They've done it in the other communities and so it's it. Yes, sir.
Joe Kelly, executive director of the Midland County Horseshoe. No, sir, the show is, is going to happen either way. If you shoot fireworks, which is what their preference is. But it's what their preference, but it won't deny the show.
So, are the fireworks sort of like, like the closure of the, of the program or?
Yes, sir. They could, it's, for whatever reason, it's a very big part of their show. For whatever it's worth, we contracted the show months ago. They are doing the show in six other cities, primarily parks. They're doing fireworks in all six other cities. Some of the parks, according to them, I don't know the locations, are close to interstates. Mr. Manley, who's, who's been the coordinator, said when he was denied, had he known that he was going to be denied the fireworks permit at the horseshoe, he would have done the event at the baseball park. But it was too late then, they'd already made plans and so forth. And his request in working with Chief Little was that the way to get the fireworks to happen was to go through Chief Little and bring it to you all.
So, they're, they're trying to do it the right way.
Commissioners, Judge, my concern is that, that we don't have a, a policy to allow it. This would really be rushing in to try to develop a policy on short notice. And if we allow it for this show, we're going to have to allow it for anybody else who has a show who can meet the same requirements.
If I may, these are just my thoughts. My colleagues may have other thoughts. I don't think we're trying to establish a policy. I personally would be against a policy. I think every show has to stand on its own as to what they're using in the location. But more particularly, are they professional or is it just some guys that showed up at the carnival and they want to shoot them? So, that, that's my opinion.
Sure. But if, if you, if you, if you allow it and don't have a policy and someone else comes up and can meet these same requirements and you deny it, then you have the potential for a lawsuit. So, I'd, I'd suggest either take the time and develop a policy or just don't do it at all. That's just my suggestion.
Okay. Court? Anybody else? David, thank you for sharing. It's always great having you here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Conversation.
How much time do we have?
None. Joe Evans, 30. I think we're stuck with, we've got the fire marshal saying no, so, you know, it's unfortunate. I think that's where we are right now. As much as I'd like to, to help, help them out. What do you feel?
I, I agree. I think that if we're ever going to allow anybody, I don't care who it is, to do that, we do have to set up some type of a policy where there's, because we don't even know if, if it was to happen, we don't have an emergency plan for it. We have no idea of what we're going to do, where we're going to go, how do you evacuate? We, we have.
We have emergency plans and evacuations for the, for the horseshoe. I mean, we can, because if the, if this goes, they can't, nobody can be in that area anyway. No animals can be there in the barns.
Yeah, we have to have plans for any building.
Yeah, and we have plans for that. They're looking at 7,500?
7,000 or so.
Roughly 7,000 people coming for that. And then they're also setting up for something else in one, in the other parts of the, of the horseshoe, so.
Randy, do you have a thought?
Yeah, I, I know the purpose of this event, it's really noble. And I hate that it's where it's at. I, I tend to agree with the side of caution on this one. But I hate it because I know it'll be a big fun event for people and they'll be helping. I think it's going to be a donation for, to help our fellow Texans that are in bad shape down in Houston and other places. And I know this would help, help that event take place. However, I can see myself if I was driving down the interstate and I see fireworks. I mean, it's going to be hard not to want to stare at it. So, I tend to feel sad that we probably ought not to allow it.
Okay, so is there a motion? And you do it two ways. Is there a motion to not do it or you can just leave it alone? No vote and it stays as the policy has been to this date? Or you can have a motion to do it in some limited fashion? What's your pleasure? What I'm hearing is you don't want to change it so it wouldn't require a vote unless you just want to go on record.
I think that's where we are.
Yeah, that's where we are.
Okay, so there's no action. That in essence, Dale, means that the current posture for that facility continues.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 30, discuss take action on fleet accidents. Dwayne? Okay, there is none.
Judge, representatives of Midland College are here if you want to hear from them on that earlier item. I know it's been approved, but in case.
If Midland College would like to come up and talk after the item has been approved, you're more than welcome. Let me go back to number six. Discuss and take action on the rising. County judge's deciding to argue between Midland College and Midland County. It was a 4-0 vote in favor of you, but you're more than welcome to come say whatever you want. How are you, Stacey?
I, Ms. Fred, we thought it was a 10, so.
That's okay. It can be whatever time you want it to be.
Well, I guess we thank you then for approving it. Do you have any questions on our numbers or? It's a great program. It keeps growing. We have more courses. Lisa Fonder said that ours probably were the best attended in, in Texas. So, I think we're doing the right thing.
Good job. Any question of these ladies?
If there's anything else we can help you out with, just let us know.
Tell Dr. Thomas, y'all are so good, he didn't even have to come.
Yeah, I might forget that part.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, well, let's go 30, 31, excuse me. It says table, please. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to table 31. We'll see you Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
I don't know that we've got it agendized. I'm serious, I don't know that we've got it agendized.
She normally is going to be placing two items on the agenda. One of them, that normal personnel memorandum. The other one, approving actual payroll.
Okay, well, I invite you to check that while we're doing this. Go.
It's good?
It is, okay, because the sample I saw didn't have it on there. You want something?
Yeah, I'm not going to ask.
32, discuss, 31 is officially table pending Wednesday. 32, discuss take action on budget line item transfers. And before you start, I do have a question for Mincy. Mincy, if we're going to do this Wednesday thing, then do we just take 31 off of the court dates?
Yes, sir, you sure can.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. 32's up.
All right, I do have line item transfers for you and I do have some exceptions for you. And some of these are old-year line transfers and I do already have some new-year line item transfers. Page 11 of 37, line item transfer 2017, 9555. And that is actually in my department, moving money out of salary employees into contract services. I did have Stephanie who was on maternity leave and I did have my admin assistant that left. I decided to go ahead and do attempt to hire from staffing resources and therefore I'm asking to transfer $2,000 out of salaries into contract services.
Okay.
I do have page 14 out of 37 and that's out of the sheriff admin. And they're just moving funds around. What they're ultimately trying to cover is the salaries for the detention office because we do pay all of that overtime and such. We're just trying to cover that out of the different, out of their different lines. But it is transferring money out of different sub-departments of the sheriff's office and therefore I'm bringing it to your attention. And that's the same thing with line item transfer 9623 on page 16 of 37, sheriff's office amounts. On page 18 of 37, we do have child protection court. It is decreasing the salary part-time, trying to move money into respective lines to court-appointed attorneys, court reporters. And moving money also out of transcripts. She's just trying to cover all those lines. And on page 20 of 37, line item transfer number 2017 9712. That is moving money out of courts at law number one, or county courts at law into courts at law number two, trying to cover court-appointed attorney money. That's what I have for the old-year line item transfer. On page 26 of 37 is all the new ones. And the one that I just want to bring to your attention is on page 34 of 37, having to do with moving money out of building maintenance into capital outlay less than 5,000, moving $10,000 and I believe is to funds for scales that are, that we're wanting to purchase, so.
Yeah, the scales are for the trash pickup thing.
That's all I have for your line item transfers.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve all line item transfers.
Okay.
Second?
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any posts, signs, motion passes. Let's go to 33, discuss take action on bills and wire transfers.
Yes, sir, I do have some wire transfers. Tax assessor refund account, deposit and general pooled cash account in error, 2,67513. District clerk, deposit and general pooled cash in error, $355. And I have two of the JP internet accounts deposited in general pooled cash account in error, Those are the wire transfers that are being requested today. As far as the bills are concerned, I do have some exceptions in the bills. Biddle Consulting Group out of the IT department, $899 for credit call elite maintenance renewal. The explanation provided by our IT department indicates that this was a place into our budget to pay on behalf of another department. The invoice was generated by the vendor in August. I guess no PO was, was completed for that purchase. Penguin Refrigeration out of SO detention, no PO. It was for the ice machine. Explanation provided says, this is, this is work on the ice machine in the kitchen and we are required to maintain. Willard thought that Summit Foods was responsible for the invoice and did not write a PO. And so, that was the explanation on that invoice. I do have one for Reynolds Brothers out of the 385th District Court in the amount of $47 and actually $44.25. It is to, the explanation provided from Judge Daring indicates that attached police finding invoice for program to the Veterans Treatment Court, graduation held on September 22nd. We did not know the content of the program until the last minute and we failed to get a purchase order. It is my fault because I did not think of getting the program printed until yesterday, is what the explanation provided indicates. I have another invoice from Supply Works in the amount of 1,95361 for the facilities department. And it's a gooseneck spout is what it exceeded the PO by $314. The total of the invoice is 1,953. And it just, it is for the sheriff's office detention. Again, the explanation provided said that Willard had ordered from the vendor without looking at the balance prior to the order. He made a mistake, is what the explanation provided indicates. We do have, out of facilities, $421.35. Winnelson, it does exceed the PO by $245. And explanation provided from the facilities department indicates, I spoke with Crystal from Midland Winnelson. She said that the invoice says quote, but it is not really a quote. I mentioned invoice, another invoice. And basically, there was just extra repair kits that were ordered. They were not in the purchase order. I have another one for the horseshoe, Petro Communications, no PO, delivered to the horseshoe facility. It's batteries for the radios. Explanation provided indicates the attached invoice needs to be expensed. These batteries were not ordered by Tim and they were ordered for the radios of the horseshoe.
Yep. They just went out.
Yep. I do have one that I had brought to court last time for the DA's office, reimbursing Jana Anderson, reimbursement for refreshments that, that was purchased for the legislative update meeting hosted in Midland. The explanation provided from the DA says, "On August 30th, Jana Anderson went to Sam's to purchase stopdrinks and refreshments for TDCAA annual legislative update. This update was to train prosecutors and law enforcement across Midland. I'm the Permian Basin about the new legislative changes to the Code of Criminal Procedures, Texas Penal Code, and other codes applicable to prosecution. Without this update, law enforcement and prosecutors would not be able to effectively prosecute cases and enforce the new laws that were going into effect. The training greatly benefits the public by ensuring law enforcement and prosecutors are up to date on legislative changes. The reason there is no purchase order is because we lost track of time to secure one and there was no money left in the line item and we're not able to make that transfer." But that's what the purchase for, that is what the public purpose. If you so wish to approve that, that is in the amount of $98.24. I have two additional bills that I wanted the court's help on. It has to do with Hawkins Battery and Golf Carts. These were golf carts that were rented for the, for the Midland County Fair. I think in talking to facilities, we weren't sure if that's something that needed to come out of the facilities budget or the Midland County Fair. That we rented some eight at $40 a day, 2,495. The also, the other problem that we had with this is one of them was damaged. And therefore, we have a invoice here for $2,220.51 from Hawkins Battery and Golf Cart. These are not included in your bills. I just needed the court's guidance in regards to whether we really should pay for that or is that an expense of the county fair? And then, of course, the damaged one.
I don't know what you're talking about. Tim, do you know anything?
Yes, sir, every year, we always rent extra golf carts for all the staff out there to turn around because it gets so big and congested. This year, they did have one of the staff damage. One of the golf carts, didn't know about it until we received the invoice from them saying it was damaged. They didn't report it to us. But Tammy said they are going to take care of the damage on the golf cart, that invoice.
Okay, so the practice of renting the golf carts?
Historically, I've been renting them because the staff uses them out there because it, it gets bigger.
Okay.
They have to be all over the place. So, I rent extra golf carts. We only have three.
So, that's a general practice item, but the damage is not and they've already communicated to you they're going to pay for the damage.
So, is that something that should come out of the money that we provide to duly management for running the facility?
No, this is Tim's. Tim rents. Tim rents these golf carts.
So, we pay for his debt. I'm renting them.
He's been paying for, that's what he was just telling us, he's been paying for them out of his bill.
Okay, I just was wondering, I, I guess I didn't understand exactly how that was Midland County's expense rather than the county fair's expense, but Tim has explained, I guess, the employee, it's our employees or duly management employees?
I think it's both.
Okay.
Well, yes, because-
What I know about it.
The golf carts we use out there now are used by our employees and duly's, both.
Yeah, okay.
So, we just, and they bring on extra staff-
Gotcha.
At that time, and we rent extra golf carts.
If, if you'll give me or Tim the, there you go, the damage bill, we'll get that collected.
Yes, sir. So, if you would please, if you're wanting us to pay for this, if you would-
This one's there. Just to catch this for damage.
Right, this is there.
This is there. Oh, you're giving it back to me? Yeah, I've already sent it, I've already sent it to them, and Tammy said they would handle that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All right.
So, that's $2,495, that's would be an additional bill that's not included in your bills, if you would- I want me to go ahead and pay for that?
Yeah, out of Tim's office, okay.
And that's for the rental of the golf cart?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, you've heard the explanations, are there questions, or is there action? Is there a motion?
Make the motion to pay all bills of our transfers.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Always in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you. Thirty-four, take action on submitted application permit to use cane right-of-way utility line installation driveway construction, mailbox construction. Precinct one.
One.
Precinct two.
Two. I'm sorry, three.
All right, precinct three.
Two.
Precinct four.
None.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve all of these.
All right, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Yes, sir.
In reference to item 17, it's online, if you want to connect on your phones. Make it a wifi.
Well, look at you. I'm telling you. Okay, we've got three executive session items, and they are 35, 36, and 38. Conducting executive session, present Texas Criminal Code, Section 551.071, Sault Ste. County Attorney Regarding Pending Prospective Litigation and Other Matters. 36, conducting executive session, present Texas Criminal Code, Section 551.074, discuss personnel matter. And is Laura coming down? This is-
She's gonna try to come down if they take a break.
Okay, you want to check with her and see where they are, because we can take them in a different order. And that would be 38, conducting executive session, present Texas Criminal Code, Section 551.076, discuss security devices. Let's take a five-minute break, and then come back, please. By my watch, it's 11:20. Okay, we're in recess for about five minutes.